City of Dexter Council meeting, please rise and bring in the pledge of allegiance. Bonnie will lead us to flag the screen here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Pam, are you ready to call the roll?
Laura.
Here.
Hudson. Fisher.
Yes.
Comer.
Here.
Michelle.
Present.
Here.
Heeding.
Here.
And the.
Yes, you notified us earlier. Item C this evening is approval of the meeting minutes from our city council meeting of August 22nd, 2022. So a motion to approve the minutes. Who's like this? Thank you.
My second.
Laura, thank you. Okay. Okay. And we have with us this evening Sue Dancer. She is representing the group that supports Constitution Week and the importance of the Constitution, obviously, in our day, the United States of America. And I have a proclamation to read. It's Sue's present for. Sue, did you want to say words about that ahead of time or should I go with the proclamation first?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. It's not too long, so. Whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas it is fitting and proper to encourage, support, and recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Sean Keough, Mayor of Dexter, Michigan, hereby proclaim September 17th to 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to take note of the observance. Sue, welcome.
Do you have a just to stay here?
Wherever you're going.
Okay. I want to thank you for having me here tonight and for the proclamation celebrating Constitution Week. I'd also like to thank Sharon Clark, who was a former DAR Daughters of the American Revolution region, who helped coordinate this proclamation. I'm Sue Dancer and I'm a member of the Sarah Castle Angel Chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution. The DAR is a nonprofit, nonpolitical, volunteer women's service organization dedicated to preserving the memory and spirit of the men and women who achieved this American independence. It is our mission to actively promote patriotism, preserve American history, and secure Americans' future through better education for children. We sponsor scholarships, educational initiatives, service to veterans, community service, and commemorative events such as Constitution Week. As you know, our country has two founding documents, the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. While we celebrated the independence since revolutionary war times, the signing of the Constitution on September 17th, 1787, had no special commemoration for 168 years. In 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to dedicate September 17th through the 23rd to each year to commemorate the Constitution. Congress adopted this resolution, the President Eisenhower signed it the following year. Since then, presidents, governors, and mayors have issued proclamations celebrating this week. This year marks the 235th anniversary of the United States Constitution. We've had regular federal elections every two years since ratification through a civil war, two world wars, the Great Depression, social upheaval, and terrorist attack on 9/11. Why is our Constitution endured when others have come gone? First, it's a statement of fundamental principles of the government with restraint that also allows for innovation. Amending the Constitution is difficult but not impossible. Many amendments have been proposed, but only 23 have passed. Second, the Constitution was the first of the world's first in trying itself governance. We, the people, chose our leaders rather than inherited the monarch or having a dictator close to us. Third, our culture of respect for the Constitution continues to give life to the document written 235 years ago. Loyalty to the Constitution, however one chooses to define it, is an enduring feature of American life. In closing, let's remember the words of the preamble of the Constitution. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic courtability, provide common defense, promote the welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." So this evening, we celebrate the signing of the Constitution on September 17th, 1787, and continue to be mindful of the importance of the Constitution in our country's future. Thank you for this afternoon.
Thank you, Sue. Item approval agenda. Any discussion on the agenda? Ma'am, please go over to approve the agenda.
Comer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Fisher. Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Eel.
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Item F on the agenda is Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. We have any?
I didn't see it. I just wanted to confirm to someone who knows, but we're not paying my employer this. It normally has the cover sheet and I didn't see that.
Yeah, it didn't burn off right, and so the GL distribution report is still in here and reflective of all the time.
I didn't see it, so I guess I don't have it.
None this evening? We have no voluntary hearings this evening, so doubt of not arranged participation. Please, anyone that would like to speak, please introduce yourselves, state your name and address for the record if you would please.
My name is Dan Schloss. I live at 7939 Fourth Street in Dexter. I'm very excited to announce I will be running for city council in the upcoming November election as a write-in candidate. Because of all my past 37 years' experience working for the city and living here the majority of my life, I feel my history, my experience, my perspective would make me a valuable addition to city council as the voters choose. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Good luck to you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening? If so, please use the right hand feature or the chat room to let our host know. No hands, no chat? Okay. All right, well, that concludes not arranged participation at this time. We are down to communications. Item I on the agenda, our meeting calendar. Anybody have any comments on the meeting list? Zach?
The upcoming Capitol meeting next month, we're going to have someone from Spark help to speak with us, and the month after that, we're going to have someone come to talk to us about downtown.
So October is Spark?
Yep.
And November is Trump. Thank you.
Do we know how long will be meeting here? Do you have any idea?
So at least through the first meeting in October. It depends on how quickly we can get. I think I noted in here that we're right into an issue with the columns, the replacement columns at the new city hall, and we're working through the process of figuring out what alternatives there are or what the solution is to.
Any other comments on the meetings? Okay, we'll move down to our first report this evening. Tim Stewart, Public Service Superintendent, welcome, Tim.
Welcome.
Very good.
How are you? Good, thanks. We have three-week report in front of us. Questions, I can take those and I can get some other stuff. Two that I have to question.
I just wanted to say, thanks for answering the questions. I submitted a number of them in the supplement.
I have a question about, not, I don't think I, it wasn't on the, on the report, but the speed sign on Dexter and Arbor coming to Dexter, the 40 mile speed. I think it is there, but it's still covered.
It's still covered?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're still waiting on the permit, the right-of-way permit from Washington County Road Commission to install, hey, heads up, you know, speed is reduced in that zone. So we're, the city patch will be installing a sign in the Washington County right-of-way, but they have to approve us to do that, and we've submitted the permit request, and now we're just waiting for them to approve it.
Thank you.
Who else?
I just wondered which white fence we power wash.
The white fence that they put around for paint dexter or the round ice cream.
I see.
Sometimes things can be a little vague, but I figured everybody knew because.
That makes sense. I didn't think of that.
No, you're fine. Well, I got a couple of things. We're going to stop signs for Jamie as far as where they're at. The problem is, I went and took a look at it. I'm thinking that the reason that they're up there, how far they are up is because the slight distance, as far as when you're trying to look left, even alls you see is cars parked there, and I think that's the reason. I don't know. Kurt and I were looking into where that went, but I just, I went and looked at myself, and I was kind of hard if you're back car because it's all these cars everywhere.
And just so, if there's a, if there's a liability to this idea at all, to have a stop sign on the far side of a sidewalk.
No, and I understand. I want to look into it more too, because there might be a code of some sort that tells me, you know, where you're heading out. That being said, too, is, I mean, you could put it before, like we were saying, people would stop, but then they'd still approach it, you know, to see. I have a hard time. And I'm in a big truck.
It's huge right-ofways or, you know, right.
Right.
I mean legally, you're supposed to stop at the stop sign.
Yep.
So I just don't know. You want to do, are we getting ourselves into a situation if there is a pedestrian and there's a driver trying to place the stop sign, you know?
Right. Well, I think it is incumbent upon the driver to stop for pedestrians, whether or not there's a stop sign.
Right.
The pedestrian has the right-of-way.
But I, like I said, we're still looking into like. You people outside.
That's fine.
Just, just as a follow-up to, it's not exactly stop sign. Are all the RRFs working?
Sorry.
Are all the rectangular wrap and slash?
Yes, as far as I know, there was one that was having a problem on Dan Hoyle. Actually, Dan called me, and then I seen it myself as I was driving up there. It was malfunctioning. And as of last Thursday, I think they presented it to take care of.
Okay.
And then they were working on with Dan Hoyle and Dexter and Arbor as far as the switching that out to what we were talking about before with the pedestrian walk and stuff. And I'm pretty positive, I'll double check, but I think he's good. Got it all taken care of, so. Um, we talked about the grass and stuff over on Second Street. They will be here. We talked to the landscapers themselves. They'll be here tomorrow. They will put down the rest of the herbicide they need to kill the rest of the grass that's there. And they will be out one week from then to do whatever it takes, whether it's put black, dirt gum, raking up, doing what they got to do, and then we see them everything back to where it was. So they're, they're pretty well on it. More than I thought they would be. Hopefully, we didn't catch it too late this season, but.
Yeah, but we aren't holding working here.
Right.
Until it is.
Maybe that's why they're working with someone. The papers, they'll be out Wednesday through Friday. Broad third and hopefully wrapping that up pretty soon. It's substantial was the fifth of October. So that means everything goes well and weather's good. We'll take care of that this week. The other thing was talking about tours. I know you guys have talked about that in the past. We are going to hold a small one with multi-links every year Friday at around 1:00. So if you're really interested, you guys are welcome. Just send myself an email. Choose the day you guys can come on.
Tim, what's the latest on the last bit of concrete sidewalk work on Third Street there across from the mill?
So what they're going to be doing is, once they get everything in, they're going to be putting the whole sidewalk and everything, but they had to wait to take care of the wall first. Get that wall up. Once that's done, they're going to do sidewalk work through.
Okay.
We had to change a couple of things, but that's the point.
Yeah, okay. So they'll do that after the baby, right?
Yes. Yeah. So. We'll switch backs. No, thank you. Not that I'm involved, so it looks like everything's gonna happen. Okay.
I think so. You guys dust off the leaf machine?
A lot of things are working on it right now. It's kind of busy week, so.
It's empty that season.
Today feels like fall.
Yeah, it's been nice on it. Good.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. Next up is our Community Development Manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm getting better each day. Thank you for asking. How's council this evening?
Good, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so before I go into updates, you have before you my staff report. I've also provided an update in the supplemental report. Again, before I go into any other updates, do you have any questions that I can answer for you on either of these, the report or the supplemental information?
Michelle, I want to just say a couple of things. Michelle and I spoke the day after the meeting or the meeting that didn't occur officially. I guess I would like council's guidance on this or whatever, but I expressed to Michelle that I thought that they should have opened the meeting. They had enough people in person to open the meeting, and I think if they decide not to take any action, I think we're better off if we have a forum, opening the meeting and then deciding that and letting us have an official meeting record from which to benchmark it, rather than not having the meeting and coming up with an informal, whatever we call it, this what do you put in there? With the phrase?
Public presentation.
Informal public engagement session. You know, there's, there's nothing wrong with the feedback that you got, but I would like to see us open meetings when we have a forum. The virtual component that we offer on every meeting, to my knowledge, is not a requirement of the Open Meetings Act. If, if the, it's not a reason we shouldn't have to have a meeting. I, it may be a reason where somebody wants to say, hey, because we don't have it, we want to wait to take action. To me, that's perfectly acceptable if that body should decide to do so at that time. But I think we want to express to the chairs of all of our committees that if they have a forum that we've publicly noticed the meeting, they should open it and close it properly so we can at least then vote on meeting minutes, the next meeting, their official and such. So I did express that to Michelle, and assuming I have your concurrence, my plan is to talk to each of the chairs of the different boards and kind of share the examples so that they understand the expectation. And I would ask for staff's help in doing that as well as you meet with the different bodies.
So the only issue was that you couldn't get these participants in the reception system?
Yeah, I believe there was an issue with, with getting this in operational.
Yeah.
But it was operational enough that Michelle was able to be at least visible or participate somehow.
Right.
Because she was there to hear it or just her sound quality was bad coming in or out, or while I was there, so.
But yeah, it also took us maybe 20 or 30 minutes to even get to that point. So there was discussion about whether or not people had tried to, you know, were there, couldn't figure out what's happening, left, you know, we weren't sure of all those things. And I will say too, Sean, that it seemed like we had, and I mean, I guess I shouldn't, we had a discussion about opening the meeting and about not taking action, and it seemed like there was support there to do it. And then I just think in the chaos of trying to get something to work, that sort of just didn't happen.
Well, I appreciate that everybody stuck around and that you had a discussion with those that were there. I just think that it puts us in a stronger spot to be able to have a that's in a true, we can explain this, you know, it's not the first time the technology's failed on something, but if anybody has any concerns with that, I don't know. Zach?
So having you have to run a bunch of public meetings, planning commissions, EVAs all over the world, the thing that I think of is the tech is required for a public meeting. People have to be able to attend, but if you promised it and they're expecting it and they don't, they're, it'd be very difficult to prove anything on that night. But at the same time, if something requires a public hearing and you advertise, you sent out the letters like we did to all the property owners, if you open the public hearing and then postpone to a later date, to a specific date, you aren't required to go through all the notice because everyone who's interested can show there. And that's generally how I like to handle it if we know we're not going to be able to sign, open it, postpone it to a specific date.
Yeah, that would still take place out of me.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't postpone something officially. I guess you pretty did by not having a meeting, but.
Yeah, exactly. I think some of what we were struggling with in the moment was, was the most people we've had in the room since COVID. And it was really hard to tell those people, hey, you took your time to come here tonight, but sorry, we're not going to do anything. We're not going to have this public hearing. You know, I mean, leave and please come back next month and make, you know, make that work too. I just felt like inconveniencing the 15 people that were here was not a great idea. So I'm not sure how we get around that.
I simply think you have another public hearing. I mean, if you feel that strongly that you didn't get all the comment, you just schedule another public hearing. And the process that you're in takes another month or another, whatever. It isn't that hard to do. I mean, you catch the 15 at that time, and then at the second one, you get whoever else wants to come back or.
This is the last thing I'll say. And yes, that makes sense, but I think the concern we had was because there was such a long delay on the front end that we may have had people who were going to be online for a public hearing that weren't there anymore.
Understood.
Right.
Okay, we can talk about the comments if we want. I just wanted to procedurally discuss what happened and what we need to. Michelle, back to you.
Okay. If there are no other questions about the planning commission meeting, and I appreciate the guidance from council regarding the meeting, excuse me, and will endeavor to follow that in the future. And in the event that anything like this happened again, I piggyback off what Zach said. If we are promoting it as both in-person and virtual, and we have some sort of technical difficulty that prevents the virtual attendance, we would open the meeting, open the public hearing, but postpone it, re-notify it, even though technically we wouldn't be required to. We would so that when planning came back the next month to hold the public hearing, people would have noticed, and we've covered all of our bases. If anybody wants a copy of what was recorded, I can send that out to, out to you. I know, Jamie, you had asked for it, and I've been, I haven't gotten it to you yet, but I will send that out tomorrow. If, if all of council knows they want it, just let me know, and I'll just make sure that I send it tomorrow when I send the link to Jamie.
So I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but you know, not everybody can make every meeting. So not, not everybody can make every meeting. So I mean, if people took the time to come, I think it would have been better to open the public hearing, take their official comment, and then just say we're going to have another one because there's no guarantee that those 15 can make the next meeting when you.
I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying. Notice.
Like that was an option. So that's something that I would make clear. We're going to talk to all the chairs, that that is an option.
When it comes to the Main Street banner, I provided some information about how the Main Street banner will be handled in the zoning ordinance. You'll recall that it was in the current ordinance more as a temporary sign. And if we were to continue to do it that way, we would have to make sure that it was open to both commercial and non-commercial speech. I, my understanding or reading of council and policy is that commercial messaging is not a direction that you're ready to go. Therefore, in order to still have a Main Street banner, we're going to need to do it as one that's within the public right-of-way because we then do have the option through the application process to be a little more subjective, if you will. Okay.
Where did you learn that?
I'm going through the update with Megan and looking over and understanding the Reed versus Gilbert decision.
Okay.
Okay. The only other way to do it, Sean, would be not to have a Main Street banner anymore. And I didn't think that was the direction that the community wanted to go.
Sorry, maybe I missed something. Is that in the packet?
It's in the supplement on the third page, under questions from council. It's one, two, three, the third one down.
Oh, I see. You asked about that. I didn't know.
Okay, sorry about that. You, you'll recall that I've been working with the Washington County Building Department as part of our whole rental inspection, what is up and coming or being worked on right now, but also property maintenance. There were a couple of properties that I asked them from a building code standpoint to please take a look at. One of them was 8250 Huron. And when they went out and did their inspection, they did notice that the building appeared to be unsafe, and so they posted a notice. And at the same time, they also noticed a questionable liquid on the ground and contacted resources who then contacted Eagle. Though those are separate processes that are being worked through and investigated currently due to the proximity of that particular parcel to the Huron River. We were out there again today, see how things are going. The property owner has started to reconstruct or fix the building. The difficulty with that is though he has not gotten his zoning compliance or a building permit. So the county had to put a stop work order. Hopefully, we can we can get the property owner to follow the processes so that the building can get fixed up. But that's where we are right now. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. One correction in my report, when I did this report, I had. One correction in my report, when I did this report, I had been asked to be part of an interview panel for the city of Chelsea. Due to a, a conflict of interest with one of the potential candidates, I ended up having to recuse myself, so. I didn't end up sitting on the panel. Other than that, do you have any questions? How do you like the, how do you like the format of the new annual planning report?
I thought it looked nice. So, so Michelle, have you recontacted all fourteen members of the public that were at the planning commission meeting?
I have not recontacted all of them. I have, um, excuse me, I'm so sorry. We are working on that. We have been in contact with a number of them before the meeting actually, and provided information. One of the property owners, the one for thirty-six seventy Central. We are working out a time to meet, hopefully tomorrow. But we'll work with you.
Are these comments that you summarized here in the order of the members of the public, the audience that are up above?
No, there's not a clear, what's the best way? There's not a clear way to identify who said what because of when Megan and Grace were in person, they were concentrating on listening as opposed to necessarily detailed note taking as to who said what. But they did have a general idea of where people were and Grace did have a sign in sheet. I know some of the comments, who they are attributed to. But I don't, I can't say that I know all of them. And so I aired on the side of, okay. Who, who do I know? Who don't I know? And I just put the, the generalized. Other than the ones at the very end where it talks about specific property owners and their property. Okay?
Well, I, I read in your report that we will be scheduling meetings with these property owners to get the root of their concerns. So I, I, I think it would be helpful if we could put the people that spoke with the comment.
I will attempt to do that, Sean. I don't know that, that everyone will want to have a follow-up appointment. We will certainly try. Like I said, we have met with certain ones already, three, two, six, eight Central, for example. It'll be a decision as I've laid out in my supplement, or in the supplement, how we handle different uses that weren't contemplated and are currently allowed per their zoning district, so. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I just think, I just think it, I mean, the, the thing that seems missing to me is that you would assign a comment to a property.
Uh, we'll endeavor to do that and have that for the next meeting. How's that?
That would be great.
I may be able to help with that, Michelle. So if there's, if there's anything that you can't figure out, I may be able to help with that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Notes, that'd be great.
I mean, I took mental notes and they're still pretty clear in my mind.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, and a lot of them are my neighbors, honestly.
Okay, so, cool. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, that's it.
I mean, I mean, and the reason for that is I may want to follow up with some of these folks, but on their concern, but I don't want to. I guess I could do it generally, but it'd be nice to know specifically what their concern is.
That, okay, we will, do, do you want this list then before the next meeting, Sean?
I mean, as, as, yeah, as soon as possible, yes, please.
Okay.
I'll thank you. It makes sense to be able to know the perspective.
How about, how about if I do this? I'll work with Grace and Wa and, and try to assign the comments to the different addresses and then I will email them out to everyone in council.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I have a question. I saw that Noble, Noble of Fine is reopening. Any information of what happened? Not that I'm sad their open reopening was just unexpected because we heard they were selling it and then they're reopening.
Yeah, they're, they are trying to sell the property and then do a lease with the, with a new owner. I, I don't think they've been successful at that yet. At least I have not heard that they have. Basically what they did is they sort of reorganized themselves, both their space and their business model in order to be able to continue to operate out of the storefront in Dexter Crossing. If, if the zoning would allow a more warehouse type situation, that probably would have worked better for their model. It, but it, that's not allowed. And so they, they took probably about sixty days, I think, to get their reorganization in hand, both their business model and internally. And when I say reorganization inside, they didn't do construction. It's just a matter of organizing the store in a manner that is more conducive to retail operations. And backroom repairs, pack, repackaging assembly, things like that aren't done in the open on the sales floor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, a follow-up on that. So was that something initiated by the city? Did the city reach out? Did the city reach out to Noble of Fine and say, hey, if you're operating as a warehouse?
I did reach out to them when I found out, when I was doing a parking lot inspection earlier in, you know, in the summer, that it was the, that the, they had a note on the door that they were closed. And so I reached out to them to find out what was going on and to make sure that they understood that what the zoning required. And so that, like I said, they, they took that in hand and did what they need to do in order to reopen under the correct zoning.
Thanks. I have one more follow-up on a different, there's a certain whiskey distillery opening downtown.
I'm sorry, say.
A whiskey distillery?
So it's a tasting room for spirits, including whiskey, which is made off-site. So it'll be brought in, it'll be distributed, excuse me, just like a, like a tasting room at Jelly Pumpkin or up in the northern Michigan where you've got the wineries, but they're not producing it on site. They won't have food or prepared food. They might have nuts, chips, pretzels kind of thing that enhance the flavor of the spirit. But they have to go through special use approval with planning commission and then they come to city council. And because currently in our ordinance, we don't have a use that's tasting room. It is and has been considered a bar tavern or lounge use.
So.
Where is that?
Thirty-one twenty-six Broad Street, the old Encore in the middle unit.
So then is there any work on that building that's allowed at this time without those approvals?
No. To the best of my, well, the building owner has a, has zoning compliance and a building permit to make the, make it white box ready. And he's had that in his, he's had that for a while, so.
Someone just mentioned that they had seen work being done there. Maybe it's just that.
Most likely just that. But we can double check it just to be sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions or comments that.
Zach has a question, Michelle.
Oh, okay.
From three weeks ago, are the folks still parking on the sidewalk on Alpine or they?
No. So I had a very frank conversation with the owner. Nobody has been parking there that I'm aware of. I, the, let's see, it's been three weeks, so. The two weeks prior to the holiday, each day I would check when I was in the office and I did not see the car parked. I can't tell you what went on last week as I was, I ended up having to work from home. But I have not heard anybody else complain then.
Thank you. Any other questions from Michelle? Okay, we will move down on the agenda then. We're, we're on page three to city manager's report yesterday. Sure.
Doesn't anybody have any questions from our report or the supplement? How are you feeling? I'm, I'm feeling all right. So we, we did have an interesting couple of weeks between the power outage and then I was diagnosed with COVID a little over ten or eleven days ago. It was the Friday before last. But I have since tested positive and I, I was feeling fine. I mean, pretty much been here kind of, and so sinus congestion and that sort of thing. But it just, uh.
Any lingering damage from the power outage?
Not, not that I've, I've noticed. So our staff did a really good job of dealing with the down trees and limbs. But, you know, we got the generators going for the, the street lights downtown. Fortunately, our water, at least water plants did not, were not impacted by the long-term outage. And so they were able to continue operating. But the, the office was down for, for a few days, which impacted our ability to access our server and files. So something we might want to look for at some point in the future is a generator for the new building. But that doesn't necessarily have to be it yet. We did get notice from the railroad that they're doing evening work, midnight to six AM. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of ability to control those hours of operation. But a couple of years ago, they did indicate that they were going to be modifying the curve of the track to accommodate high-speed rail. And I have not heard if, if that is part of this project or if it's just replacement of railroad ties. I have reached out to the government affairs rep at Amtrak and left him a couple of messages and a email that I have not heard anything back from them. We are expecting that absentee ballots will go out the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth of this month for the November election. There are three state proposals and then two city proposals and a Dexter library proposal. So that's, it's going to be quite a long ballot with women on the front and the back. From the, from the supplement. We are going to be having, the ECH is going to be hosting a smores and war event immediately following April days, October first. This is the event where we invite the community to come out and do a kind of performative act. And then we also offer smores and little fire tables for them to roast marshmallows. It went pretty well last year. The attendance was as high as AC was hoping because of rain, but try, try again. We also have gotten requests, one from the schools to modify the school zone along Danboy. To push it back from seven forty-five to seven thirty start time. And then also to relocate the, the post further south on Danboy toward, so walk mile three. So we're going to be working with the W H M and need to be to evaluate that request. Barring any significant, if, if any council has any strong feelings on that, take those into consideration as we're going through this process. But I don't see a lot of significant challenges to be able to accommodate that request.
Does that just involve us passing the transfer control order or something?
I believe so. But I just want to make sure that, that there are any state laws relating to school zones before we're going to. And then we also did get, get another request about speed bumps in Westbridge. And I wanted to provide a little bit of information about why we try to steer folks away from speed bumps. And instead work towards enforcement and putting the reader side out and try and deal with the issues that way. But if anybody has any, any thoughts on that.
Yeah, so it does seem like there needs to be an effective alternative. And I don't know how effective speed bumps are, but I do continue to be hearing from residents that enforcement is very nonexistent. You're right. Difficult to see, recognized, isn't even happening here. So I don't know what needs to happen to figure that, like how much traffic enforcement is actually happening in the city just to get an assessment of like what that is. So we can tell people, hey, this is how much this is actually happening versus not even, and we see the report, maybe only stops and that sort of thing. But we have to talk about how there can be stops for a number of reasons. So I don't know. I appreciate that people reach out to us when they have a concern. I wish we could have a better answer for that, than enforcement that they don't actually have happened.
Well, I, I talked to Justin a little bit about this. You know, unfortunately, in, in Westridge, at the location that this resident is brought forth. It's our fellow, or my fellow Westbridge residents, the ones that are causing the problem. Most people want to cut him down, or give it over to someone else. So I asked Justin if there was a way we could, we could do, you know, maybe some targeted mailings or educational efforts to say, hey, look, we're receiving complaints at these locations. If you drive past these locations, be mindful of the fact that you might be going too fast. But to try to reach out to people because I suppose it's possible that the perception is that people aren't speeding, but chances are some of them are and that it's, I don't know, just throwing ideas out there. I mean, there's no hurt and fast way to do it. We know police officer can't sit there a hundred percent of the time and you can't enforce anybody to read anything. Unless there's a non-intrusive speed bump that could be put up that doesn't involve whatever, it seems like just a seasonal thing you could do. I don't think you'd want that there in winter. But I'm, I agree with you. We need to keep trying to keep it in front of us because the sinus is a real concern. That's what people complain about.
There's another potential Ann Arbor hubble storm effect. If we let the roads deteriorate there, folks will be able to go faster than fifteen. Sort of so proud.
You're giving credit to Ann Arbor.
I call Ann Arbor hubble storm effect, yeah.
I don't know. I've driven down La Pine and they have signs there that say, I, we love our kids, drive slowly. And every time I see those, I check how fast I'm going. So I don't know if I'm excited you already have there, but that one for sure makes me like double check that I'm going slower than twenty.
Sorry, I have, I just want to add that when I was on Dexter Crossing, that was the largest number of questions I, I would get. Sorry, I just want to add that when I was on Dexter crossing G A J O A, that was the largest number of questions I would get. Can we put speed bumps? FYI, sort of.
I, I think one of the challenges is, once you open that door, you, there's no closing it. And you'll end up with speed bumps on every road. Because invariably, at some point, someone sees someone speeding in front of their house and takes issue with it. And then wants to speed bump in front of their, on their street. And so there, we could run into a challenge where how do we evaluate which streets get speed bumps? And what do we do when folks say, well, that street over there has a speed bump, I want one on mine. Why do you, why do you do it for them and not for me? Unless we are willing to place speed bumps on pretty much every residential road in the city.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, sure.
Kim, what does it do to snowball? What does, do these speed bumps do to snowball? How's that affect the car?
That's pretty sad. I have it on us and machines and stuff like that for snowballs. They would just, it's, it's not a good thing. You know, I'm sitting here listening to all this and I can respect everybody's wishes and stuff. But if you, we all drive cities and other states here everywhere around this town. And if you go on the southern, I've never seen speed bump in a subdivision. So I've seen them in private entities and stuff, but I've never personally seen them. They're, they're, they'll be a maintenance nightmare for us, like you said.
Can you even plow?
I, I don't think you could, because when we're plowing, you have to get enough speed to be able to push that snow.
Yeah.
Especially if you get a heavy snow. So I mean, like you said, I understand what you said about removing them, but it's, you're adding more work and now you're putting holes in roads and so.
Yeah, I don't want to put holes in roads.
And to what Zach said, unfortunately, Westridge is the best pacer arena we've got in the whole city. So those aren't, shouldn't be deteriorating.
I honestly definitely should mail people a letter.
Yeah, I mean, public notices.
Treat everybody the same, don't make anybody else mail it. And target, and all these places where people complain, we should list them in the letter and make people more.
I think can we give enforcement?
That would also.
And if you want to send them a letter, but then the sheriff needs to be there following me. And they need to work on a rotating list of these other places in town to be the complaints. However, you name it, your traffic enforcement, we want you here, 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 here. Rotate through these spots. I mean, I don't want to tell them to do their job, but I would propose that and get feedback from them and try to work towards something. People already have it in their business, see what the speed bump is.
And if you, like you said, if you get a notice, I'll tell everybody and then even if the police are there for a month, you know, just I don't know, once they get that presence, then it'll settle down. How long last, we don't know, but promise, like I said, speed bumps aren't making here, especially for me.
I have seen in the suburb of Nebraska, these, I don't know what, I'm trying to figure out what it's called. It's basically dug up in the road. It's like the reverse of a huck. Do you know, I didn't know what these are called. I would, they're just like totally flat of my.
Where was this?
It's somewhere in Nebraska.
Oh, okay.
I can't think what they're called. Maybe I'm misremembering.
Maddox, I would definitely, I'd put something on there, know the police, that's just.
Let's, let's try and start there.
Some of them, that's probably cheap and not expensive.
Zach?
A different topic if this one is.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. I've got actually a number of questions about the final, do we have an idea when that might appear in our fair city? Yeah, so Kurt, I've been talking to Kurt about possible locations. And the latest idea that we have, I think we've like settled on is replacing the existing fountain in Lani Park with, with a final fountain.
Yeah, I saw that. I thought that would be very nice. And then I thought about all the families that have kids down there. And I'm not afraid of anybody's dog, but there are a lot of people that are. So you're calling all the dogs to come to that area, which is, could be picnic family area. I think we need to think that through before we make that choice.
I would say the dogs are already there, Donna. I mean, I walk my dog through their constable. It's at the edge of the park. It's not like it's in the middle of the grass. No, I mean, I think people walk their dogs downtown and they walk through that park when they do that. Okay. I mean, that's just my gut instinct on that is that I, I mean.
Yeah. And my thought on it is having the Parks and Recreation Commission make a recommendation to city council to accept that.
As long as you talk it through, I can go either way, but I want them to think it through.
Other questions on Justin's report?
One was the ninety comment about the Milk Creek Middle School left turn. I went to that school for two years and I rode with my mom every day. There is no way to turn left into that school. I mean, essentially, I mean, cars are going, because they're, you have to turn on yellow or red and it's dangerous. I mean, I saw this immediately because there is no way to go to school. Yeah, this has come up in the past and I thought multiple times, I thought, do we need to reach out to the school? Where do we, who do we reach out to? Because one thing we talked about was if they were able to add a right turn lane so that there was a, there was a expanded right turn lane. So the people coming, you know, from downtown turn right into their lane, and people going left turn into their lane and it's expanded, it's too late. Why typically do that? I don't know. I would be happy to start the conversation myself or if someone representative of the city do it. But it seems like they should at least be notified.
I think that's the most brave decision.
Right. Yeah, who's just, so I don't know, Jessica, can we talk to them more?
So.
Because if it's backed up, even if you have a dedicated left turn there. For the direction she was talking about, they wouldn't be able to turn through. There's no gap, no platform to turn into.
Right, right, right. So you need a dedicated left turn lane or just those Google.
So I, I, you know, in looking at the notes from kind of last time we talked about this, I think we had gotten a proposal from O H M to do an evaluation. But we did not approve it at that point. Is this something that you would like to do a more thorough investigation? Because if, if it involves working the right of way, if that right-hand turn lane would fall within the right of way, it might be our cost potentially.
So if, if O H M, for example, would need to spend money to evaluate options. Yeah, we should, we should, we should figure out what the options are before we go to school. Who that's, that's not, which is worth all the, I'm doing that.
Right. I just don't know at what point does it get on the school property if they're, if they're adding another lane.
Yeah, yeah. We would, we would explain what we think would work best from analyzing the intersection and then kind of draft concepts that go off our property and take the school property, which definitely is not a job. Maybe you could give Dr. Timas the heads up that we're gonna look at that if we are in fact arguing with that.
Okay.
Is council willing to see a little proposal to study that? Okay, did you bring back that proposal, Justin?
Yeah, yeah. My reflection to you the last time I didn't go anywhere is it seemed like what they were proposing to study was something we already have an answer to, where we were content with the answer we had from prior. So what the proposal is to actually investigate, hey, could, exactly, could we improve this by doing this multiple length thing? That seems like new information.
Yeah, but the question we posed to them was, is there enough traffic to warrant a light signal? Yeah, the question should be, what can we do to improve it? And and more even going, going further than, you know, what, what, what physical pavement improvement that needs.
So I'm still yours? Do you want to talk about schedule at all or anything there?
Yeah, so you, you have kind of the latest schedule for improvements to thirty-five fifteen brought. This was provided before we ran into the issues with the center columns in the council chamber. We have set up a meeting for tomorrow morning to talk through possible solutions for that. And then the issue there is when they went to cut the, well, after they cut the concrete out in the basement to pour the puddings. They found that the compaction of the soil underneath is not adequate for the type of, of footing that they wanted to pour. They had taken soil pourings outside of the building, but turns out within the building, it was not good. So now the question is, well, what do we, what do we do about it? Do we try to move forward and find some way to increase compaction of the soil or spread out the loading to allow us to move forward with, with those posts or those, those columns, the placement column? Or do we do something as simple? Just rewrap the, the existing post and call it a day. At this point, we have already had a, that the metal beam, the metal header fabricated. And so there's some cost to that, already invested in that solution. But they found that, yeah, the center post is a six by six beam. And then it was clad with two by twos on the outside or two by, two by six or, or something. To kind of build, build out the, the diameter with the, the square. You can pull those side pieces off and have still be loading or bear the load of the roof. I think, you know, we're, we're looking at getting, you know, what the cost options are for. So basically a portion of the, the center columns were cosmetic. Yeah. And so they could pull that off.
It just builds up the girth.
That's, 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 that's what they had done. So we could pull some, this is often to make it thinner. But we've, we've already cut the holes in the, in the concrete in the basement and we've already purchased the, the large metal header. This designed support. So we'll structural engineer tomorrow morning.
Stay tuned, I believe. Thanks.
This GAN chart looks like it's getting into November. Is it going to be open for our two precincts there? So I, I I anticipate the, the council chamber and section three will be back open. They, they have started framing out the elevator. So if you drive by to see lock outside. And if the elevator hasn't already been delivered, we have to get that it should be delivered here the next week or so. And basically, we're gonna store it in the barn until it's ready to go up. So we, we all thought that we were gonna be waiting on the elevator. But that is, that's not the case fortunately, yes.
Anything else, Russ?
And that's it?
Okay. And we'll move down to my report. Wanted to just touch on the conversation that I had with Mr. Lutton, who owns the Sloan Kingsley property. Or is one of the partners that owns the Sloan Kingsley property as well as South Doctor supervisor Will Hathaway. The supervisor in South project does not believe that his board is interested in the four twenty-five. He personally is interested in exploring it, although I don't necessarily know that he knows what he wants in that at this time. So I did share with Mr. Lutton and the supervisor that we do have an existing four twenty-five aside as well as a four twenty-five Webster. And we both asked about some of the provisions that were in that. So we've kind of talked through some of that information. And basically, at this point, like I said in my report, Mr. Lutton indicated it needs time to consider what next steps might be. He might be looking at a smaller project. He did submit an application to South Stand Reservation Department for a portion of the property. So it's like his intent on trying to preserve or get some preserved, which I know is part of SIO's interest in that. So that's the only conversation I've had with either of them on that topic. On the thirty-first of August, I, we had an extra chamber of commerce meeting. One of them included a copy of the agenda in the package to see, to see what's talked about there. Becky Colby leads those meetings. That committee is interested in helping in some way, shape or form with the bicentennial that we have coming up with twenty twenty-four. And Steve Feynman is one of the representatives on the committee. He expressed interest in helping organize a parade. Steve is involved in helping the rotaries organize the memorial parade. So he has experience doing this. I thought it was a very good idea, but I thought I would bring that back to this group. And I, I want to talk a little bit to the ACH team a little bit. I, I think we as a city need to decide what is it that we want to do and when do we want to do it? And then let any other group that wants to recognize, you know, the two hundred year anniversary in their own way, surrounding that. But I wanted to get what your mother, do people think that this thing would be anything more than a weekend? Or I mean, if we had a parade on Saturday and something in the park afterwards, you know, is that, is that enough? But I, my sense from Becky was that, that, that the committee wasn't sure what was gonna happen yet. And I think we should figure out when for one, so we can get the date out there. And then two, what do we as a city want to do on that date? Nothing brings a community together when a parade does.
Yeah, once it's defined, then there will be sections, I suspect, that people could take over.
Yeah, well, if the orchestra, if the orchestra wanted to play in the park, they could play in the park. But I think we should define, define the main event and what's gonna happen to pick that and get out in front of that.
So if I'm, sorry, from what I remember putting the, the bicentennial proposal, bicentennial committee proposal together was that exact idea that there was, the, the committee will take a time and there were partners. And it's very interesting, and one of the first people that was the partner was, had joined the bicentennial committee was and is quite, quite liberal, former Cora Lopez. She was at that time president of the chamber. And now she's the president of the Rotary Club and she was basically presenting, representing both groups in the bicentennial. My understanding was that there was a potential week. Okay, I can double check that with ACH and Justin as well, but my understanding was the, the week of between Dexter Days and, and paint Dexter Festival was the main week that was picked. With the different activities done and ACH right now is going through a list in terms of and having recommendations of what the ACH portion or the city portion would be as activities to be, to be done for, for that week. And then there are things pre that week for celebration, viewing and then afterward. But you also learn more in those meetings than I was for a little while.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think that any type of large event usually takes time to plan. So I think it's important that we figure out the date and get the date set. And whether it fits with plain air or extra days or in between or before or after. I guess I don't, I don't know the exact date that were, that's been discussed, but I just think it's important to do that. I thought the parade was a good idea. I wanted to share that.
I think, sorry, one, one more comment is that my, I was surprised to read that in the sense that I thought chamber was there and viewing those conversations. So I don't know how much of a handoff on that had happened between the, between Quayle and.
I don't want to be anybody in trouble on anything. Everybody's efforts are appreciated, but it just, it didn't sound like there was anything definite. And people are looking for, to start getting some certainty to it, as I think, so that they can build on it, is the message I'm trying to convey. And somebody suggested, I can't remember who. And somebody suggested, I can't remember who, that maybe we look back as to what we did for the sespa centennial, if I have that right, in 150 years. And maybe there's some history there that proved out to be successful. What?
So I know we did, we had started talking about this back, way back when I was still on ACH. So let me know if I'm remembering this wrong, but we did discuss the idea of having it that week so that the painters would be here to paint some of it, right? And I'm wondering, with that in mind, have you sent out the post paint Dexter survey to them yet?
Yes, we have.
Because that's like, that's a question I'd want to ask them. Not that that would change anything. Just be honest with you.
And for paint Dexter, I always thought it would be interesting to have them use their, their painter's vision to look back, you know, 200 years and imagine the city 200 years ago as part of the festival.
So the goal is to keep you all aware of what's been talked about at the chamber, that they have an interest in helping or doing, doing something if they can. Yeah. Solidify that date and sort of zero in on it. So people know what to expect. And then other community organizations will work their way in around them. I have to say this, Suns on the River was a really good time again this year. Well attended. I think they said there were almost 400 people that participated in supporting the County Council, another active group in our area. And they do a really good job. We were in Delhi Metro Park this year and right next to the river. It's funny when you're there and you walk up and see the river, it's really wide. It's wider than this room. And looks quite menacing. And then you realize that it's, it's this deep. We saw a crane walk across. And just wanted to shout out to the work that they're doing. Does anybody have any questions for me about anything? Okay, then I'll keep this moving. We are down to our consent agenda, please. I'm sorry. Are there any council member votes? Good to see none. We'll go to consent agenda.
I'm hoping to approve the two items listed on the consent agenda. Those are payroll, the amount of $480,000, $134.78, and the closure of Sunny Street from May the 5th or April 5th.
Second by one, thank you. Ms. Pam, if you would call the vote to approve the two consent agenda papers, please.
Michelle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Arra?
Yes.
Auburn?
Yes.
Heel?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business. And we have two items of new business this evening. First is the consideration. That's our only action item tonight on new business. Consideration of connecting communities grant application resolution for the Grand Street pedestrian connector. We'll get a motion in a second. Then we'll just do a little update on, on the grant application.
Yeah. For a second.
Thank you, Wolf.
Sure. So I, and actually Josh would have been on this grant application. So I'll let perfect, let Josh provide any updates or thoughts.
I mean, as I need to be right now, over by Grand Street, a lot of brand new comments kind of northern property line. There's going to be a, a pathway that's going to be done by Aaron Brower. It's going to end up connecting up to 250 feet with a boardwalk that we are going to construct over the left hand. So that's kind of what we're applying for, for the boardwalk section, just for the portion of construction needs for that.
And so we're, we're applying for $75,000 from the connecting communities fund, which is pulled from a portion of the Washington County Road Village. We do have this project, but for this fiscal year. So the idea is to try and get it out at the end of this year, start construction next fiscal year, next spring. And hopefully try, try and beat Brower's construction of their piece. So that way we're not interrupting or doing any damage to, to the, the paved piece that, that they're installing.
Have we talked to the county? Are they expecting us?
Yeah, they are. Good.
Yeah. So I looked through the application. I thought Josh, you're the one who wrote it. We did compelling cases. I mean, in my mind, I personally don't know how necessary it is. I understand the decision and direction that was made in the past. So you did a great job selling it.
Zach? Were the folks at the county cranky that the materials had received August 31st on this resolution and touched yet?
They're, they're, they're aware of that date. They were, I mean, it's fire. And we did actually submit as their first draft of the application with a note that resolution to be provided.
Any further questions on the action before us tonight? And Ms. Pam, it's called vote to approve the, the resolution.
Michelle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Arra?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Auburn?
Yes.
Heel?
Yes. Motion carries. Our last new business item this evening is discussion on the fire station design and village information publications. Justin, I'll turn the structure over to you to look at what's here and the next steps and take any questions.
Sure. So as we've previously discussed, there is a user group that is meeting to, documents and floor plans and 3D rendering and cost estimates for both locations, 8140 and MAF for the fire station. That includes myself, chief interim chief Armstrong, councilwoman Rob, David Gasen, and I'm also from Rivers and Architecture. We've had a meeting so far. And I saw over the weekend that there was kind of a flurry of questions coming from Rivers and Architecture to Chief Armstrong. Some, some floor plan details that are really most relevant to, to DAFP and getting answered. So David was able to provide some draft floor plans and, and sketched renditions of where we were at that point in the process. And this was as of Wednesday. I think everybody goes on Tuesday. We looked at these on Tuesday and then back went on on Wednesday. But these schemes are most relevant to the map site. And they are also in flux. The idea was to look at ways and means to reduce square footage, to bring the cost of the buildings down to the budget that had been set, what the total maximum not to exceed 9.4 million, all in, including contingency and everything. I don't know. So now if you have any, any other thoughts?
I, I think the, from my perspective, it was a very nice collaboration back and forth that we, David and partners in architecture and interim chief. And they both are working very hard to put what we were asking from them as, as fast as possible.
Yeah. And so our last meeting is on, I believe it's Friday the 16th, with a quick turnaround of final documents for Wednesday's packet for the next meeting. I don't know if anybody has any, has any questions about that process so far?
I don't have questions about the process, but I don't know who composed some of this historical data. And I don't know how far it's going to go or where it's going to go.
So that, that, that's what I was gonna, gonna, go on to next.
Yeah. Okay. You know that we're missing an entity here under, what is it called?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Just so that you're aware. If we're going to print this, we ought to get it right.
Yeah. So kind of moving on to the, the second of, of the two kind of topics within the fire station, which is the village informational publications. Josh and I put together a set of, of documents that were pulled from other communities. And I really appreciate Josh doing, doing the like work on finding some other, other communities and organizations, village publications or village educational information. And then we worked on putting together, taking, taking the green, the green oak township, I think it was. Couple of pagers that you had seen at a previous meeting and then trying to apply information relevant to the city of Dexter to the categories that they had provided. And this is by no means intended to be a final draft, but it's intended to kind of provide some of the, at least some of the information that could be provided in, in such a publication. So I wanted to get council's feedback on, on that direction. A couple of thoughts that I had was, you know, once we do have a final draft of, of, you know, this couple pager, we could have it at the city offices, we'd also include it in the city's newsletter, which will shoot to have a newsletter out towards the end of September. And then have it also up on the website and be able to direct people to, to that website.
Something that, I think the person that came to mind in terms of additional information we might want to include on the informational packet was something that was helpful to me. And it couldn't fill it up immediately. But in one of our packets at some point, we saw kind of like a timeline of the city's military. But basically indicated the city's portion of people's tax bill really hasn't increased over time, even though they've noticed an increase. It's been new to these county wide villages, not so to the city. So if there's someone who can incorporate that historic trajectory and I don't know if the statement needs to be made or whatever, but just including that, you know, here's the story for us, and here's what the military can spend. And I did see in one of the other packets, they included their breakdown of maybe the library village for Amber County, they do their dollar bill thing with like we get in our tax bill. I don't know if that's valuable to include or not. But the first part, I think I would like to see if people will go, oh, okay.
So Justin, what do you expect to have for us then at the next meeting? Jason, follow the timeline that you've got and what you're working towards.
Yeah. So at the next, the next meeting, we're hoping to provide floor plans, cost breakdown and 3D rendering of the 8140 option, MAF option. And then MAF option with sheriff at 8140. We're also hoping to provide some sort of final draft that maybe looks a little bit nicer of, of this information here, along with any feedback that council has or anything that you think would be appropriate to go into this. The other part is I'd like to put this in front of Scott Munz. I'll make sure that it is legally appropriate and meets election requirements for, for such publications.
So if anybody's got any edits or thoughts on it, let's try to get that into Justin from next week or so, so that he could have it ahead of time.
Question. Are you thinking of, basically the final product would be text like that or one of the more visual?
I, I, I was thinking something a little bit more visually appealing. But that, you know, some, some of the ones that, that I personally like the best are the Midland County Road Village and the city of Three Rivers. Especially the, the city of Three Rivers with it being like a one pager. But the, the kind of trifle is also nice.
Justin, at the last meeting, I think we authorized $20,000. We wouldn't need to take any action further tonight? Or are we going to do that at the next meeting? Or are you, or are you controlling the cost of this stuff?
So I, I, I talked to David and verified that that $20,000 would get us to the next meeting.
Okay.
And, and he confirmed that, that it would. I did also talk to him about costing per today. And again, the last packet, I think that we hadn't paid Partners in Architecture since 2020 or something like that.
Let's start by saying we haven't been invoiced by.
We, we, we hadn't been invoiced from Partners in Architecture. But kind of our, one thought is that if we do choose to proceed with Partners in Architecture into deconstruction phase of this, David could build that into his proposal.
So $20,000 that we authorized last meeting, down, down from the 42 that was really estimated, is good with through the end of September.
Correct.
It's good.
Yeah. And, and, you know, there were, I, I think he, he was imagining something a little bit more in-depth or more kind of construction oriented, whereas we're looking at more help make the decision or help, help inform decisions away. As far as like graphic design.
Zach, I'll try to be right here. Has the working group discussed the challenges with the fact that the current fire station is considered legally not performing use? And be an expansion that require the cost and time of that or no?
We, we didn't specifically get into it, but both the chief and David are aware that that is.
Follow up is, was there any discussion? So part of the, the increased costs of the new structures that are zoning orange requires fancy building on the outside with masonry and other stuff. Was there any discussion of exploring not doing that?
The, the, the challenge that we've, we've pitched to David is to bring the project down to 9.4 million all in. And I think that he, he is looking at it holistically, which is square footage and building materials. So I think he, he knows that we want a nice looking building, but he's also cognizant of the fact that along, you know, there, there is quite a bit of dollar value in the materials and.
Or, or get a metal sheet. It was a lot less expensive. Final, final, final question here that will require for us. It's my understanding because of language on the ballot, that even if this council should vote seven to zero, this is the plan and we put pretty colors and we have videos that folks can go, there is no way that we can buy the next council that builds this to follow that plan. Could that be a fair statement?
I, 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 I would think so. I mean, if, if, if this council voted and it would start making expenditures for a kind of final product. You know, you, you don't want to go back on, on the dollar figure, the, the dollars that you have, that the council has spent toward the project. But if, if there's been no money down towards the final design, then.
Well, I think that's slightly different. It's you don't want to. But for example, if it said, we're going to build, show the city of Dexter, collect eight and a half million to build a pink building. We have to build a pink building, right? Versus we vote to be, to do a pink building. And then we buy the paint. We don't want to return the paint, but we could still buy a different colored paint, you know, whatever.
You could.
Okay. I'm done. Thank you.
Uh.
Could the city enter into some sort of conditional contract with a local, you know, conditional on the path of the one? Like if a provider of services was wanting to do that, would that be a way to buy it? I mean, if that's what people wanted to do, I guess. The idea was brought up. Could the current council enter into a conditional contract, I think, for all this mileage? That the city of Dexter commits to X, Y, and Z at this location, that blah, 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 blah.
You would, but you might have a really hard time finding contractors.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's. Could it, the best response or?
Yeah.
So I think, I think it's important that we all as council staff promote the fact that we have, we're looking at multiple options, but we don't have a final design on any location. And it's going to cost several hundred thousand dollars to have an architect put together a set of plans and specs for either one of these options. for either one of these options. It 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 hasn't made any sense yet to do that without knowing that we have the support of the residents to pay for a significant improvement, whether it's at A or B. So the the question that's on the ballot is the eight point four million and up to two mills. I think even as recently as last meeting, both of you expressed that you'd like to see out of this exercise, what can we do for less than eight point four? I mean, you mentioned nine point four, that's taking the eight point four and the one million that we've committed in cash to show we've got skin in the game already. But the goal isn't just to spend nine point four, to spend nine point four. The goal is to spend as best, to get the biggest bang for the buck that we can out of the eight point four million or the up to two mills. And based upon everything that's been presented just before, either one's gonna be a hell of an investment in a fire station. It's gonna be the most significant investment in a fire facility in this county in a long time. If we go to that level and, you know, at at the at the state we're at, where these drawings, I mean, everybody can look at them in the back of with me. These are hand drawn in a lot of cases. I mean, there's some formality to them, okay, that they cleaned up some things. But they're still tweaking areas. I mean, it's not unheard of at this stage of a design to have a ten or even a fifteen percent contingency at this stage. The ten or fifteen percent is the million dollars that we have in cash. Which means the design and all the other stuff needs to come in under the eight point four, I think. If that's what we're pushing for. Now, I might be floating that float a little and Zach's question about materials, I think is on. We should be asking what materials, that's one of the things to come out of here. What materials yield a station that yields the best value? I don't want anybody to think that I mean, we 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 need to have some certainty on whether the community is gonna support this significant investment before we take this this significant step of diving into all these detailed plans and specs. Which means it's gonna be, I mean, even if even if in November it passes, it's probably gonna be a what, four or six month design process before we actually know all the final details have been which is actually, it's gonna take a little bit of time after going to get there.
Well, and 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 to kind of build on that, it'll also depend on on what process we use too. If we want to use a construction manager at risk process, then we would select that that vendor first before we even get into it potentially the the bill or the 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 construction bid. We we could, you know, set the dollar value and bid it out and say, you know, or bid it as an RFQ saying CMs come come fully stocked and what you know, what your subcontract subcontractors look like.
But even even then, even even if you do a construction management, you still have to have a concept, definitely what they're getting into. They have to have something to base their idea of expertise on.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, um I just wanted to mention that both Justin and I tried to be very clear for David that yes, we we said the nine point four, but that we are looking for something else as others have also expressed interest and that in that if we think of nine point four as the max, that should include all the contingencies and all those things that might be relevant to either of those plans. So it's all of that should be in there. And the other other thing is that as Justin mentioned, David is really looking at this holistically, so there are even conversations with Chief Armstrong in in even in the sense of, you know, locker and the bathrooms and so hallway, so there is a lot of back and forth in that, that is, will include a lot of geek outs and so like.
Zach, I was gonna be done, but I just want to clarify one point that we're not the ballot question is for amount, not an up to mills. The two mills is what's necessary to support the debt today with our taxable value. If our tax bound goes up, we got a bunch of development, new stuff that drops down. If we hit a massive recession and our property values tank, it could rise and go from two to two and a half to three percent. Whatever that mill rate is necessary to support the the debt service is where it rolls. Right now, it looks like it's too, but it it flows.
That's correct. Does anybody have any other questions or? If that.
Maybe on the educational thing, if there was a way to include either, there is a meaningful website to look back to if I was just looking at our feeling that's what organizing on board there is. On the information or, you know, just something like.
Do you think that the comments that Doug provided are going to increase the reduced footprint this year? Or more, or do you think that the approximately twenty percent reduction is what we should expect to see?
I I I would expect to see a very significant reduction, so are probably in the range of thirty, no, four thousand forty, four, forty-five hundred.
Okay, so this is the expected reduction.
Yeah.
You know, you don't expect it to go more.
I I wouldn't expect it to go more.
Okay, so so the effort, the effort here is basically going from twenty thousand sixteen or something like that, something showing here. Okay, thanks for keeping the process going. Any other comments on this? Right now, I appreciate you putting it back in what you have. And then forward to the next meeting. Okay, everyone, thoughts, comments? Bye, I'll start with you. Okay. Zach?
Thank you.
Zach?
Uh with talk of vice and telling, I'm reminded of when I was in Michigan marching band, nine seven, nine eight, and it was the hundredth year of the band and we got these little pins that had wear on our uniform, which kept popping off because it's rolling back and doesn't. To this day, I'll still have nightmares of getting ready to go through the tunnel and not having stupid in somewhere marching. I will say my email and phone has been lighting up folks who are concerned with, they don't know what they're voting for. Uh including former firefighters and folks who are very supportive who said they're gonna vote against it because they don't know what they're voting for. So I would caution that should this fail in November, it doesn't mean there's not support. It means there's not support for handing eight and a half million dollars without a clear identified plan.
Thank you. What?
I guess my only comments would be Zach would have maybe appreciated that comment during the discussion, so we could talk openly as a council about what you're hearing from people.
Okay, we are down to non-range participation. Please state your name and address for reference.
Hello, Joseph, three, two, one, four, older court. In Westridge. Um I'm saying Westridge, because I wanted to talk just a little bit about the the speeding, the complaint that was so that's gonna be literally exactly where you guys were talking about tonight was the same thing that was discussed in the exact same location. Ten, twelve years ago, somewhere in that time. Um at the time, somewhere around that time, we were talking about getting that radar sign for the first time. And with it, radar sign was advertised was put up the radar sign and don't display and just take data and find out what we had, then turn it on the sign and take data again and see how it changed, see if you can affect people that way. We actually did put that sign on East Ridge at that point in time because we have those complaints. What they actually found at that time was that there was not speeding on East Ridge. There were some speeding, I mean, there's always some variation of it, but the distribution of speeding around that did not indicate that either the speeding, the speed limit was there was not correct or that there was an excessive amount of people that were speeding. Those streets in Westbridge are set up whatever what the spec was then, I don't know what the spec is now, four streets, but they were set up to be parking on one side of the street. So they're a little bit narrower than regular parking on both sides of the streets. They're not quite as narrow as they would be if there was no parking. But they are fairly narrow. There are people with kids in that area. I literally had a situation where my son, he was first driving, sixteen or seventeen years old. He was coming down East Ridge, came around there and came up older court and one of the neighbors at the end of the street chased him down the street and I heard him from inside as they were yelling at each other on the drive. So I went out and I talked to this neighbor and I said, what is going on? He said, Jay was coming down through there, the kids were out playing. I was worried about. And I said, what is he speeding? And he said, no. I said, well, why was that a concern? He said, well, the kids were out there playing and he didn't slow down. People are not rational when it comes to their kids sometimes. It doesn't matter what the speed limit is and if people are going to speed limit or not. In some cases, you know, it's a twenty-five mile an hour road and people can be concerned. I understand completely, you have to take precautions with your children. That being said, if it is too fast, and it can be fast going down East Ridge, especially if you're gonna go down to Park Ridge or down to the Coliseum. It is a long straight run. You can, you could go rough and it's actually downhill. So you could see where that kind of stuff would happen. If it is a concern, if you put the speed reader out there and you find it is a concern, you have data that says so. Then we should be looking at traffic calling devices that are published and understood. We can try narrow up the street to the park. We could make it much now, say there is no park. We could put a roundabout in at East Ridge and Bridge. There's, there's things that we can do in there that won't affect the snow flowing and will calm the track. So what we usually do is we get the complaint, might even get the data, and then we say, oh, we really can't do it. If we want to, we can do, they may be expensive, they may be long term, they may need to go on the CIP, but there are things that we can do. So I'm encouraged to think that's what the next steps are and what things that traffic engineers can tell you can be done to address those type of problems. Um. On the fire village. There are gonna be some people on council when they speak to residents. They will say the same thing that I've said to you, and that is that there are gonna be a couple of different designs out there. You will get a chance to see what those are. Whatever we do, it will be an excellent addition to the community. It will be a huge improvement. It will last for the next few years and it will serve our community well and it'll do the things that we needed to do. There will be people who will not say that and will even though they know that is the case and they know that it's gonna improve things and it's gonna work for the community, are gonna tell the residents half of the story so that it sounds like it's a real problem and that they should support. That's now what this community needs. This has been going on a serious discussion for at least four years. And y'all know that about three years ago, two or three years ago, it was ready to go on the ballot. The discussion of the next council, how do we bind the next council? This is the next council. Ms. Fisher is the only one that will not be here, most likely, I mean, most likely. Right, you have five, seven years. This is the council, you know, don't worry about binding anybody or anything. You're the same people that are gonna have the same discussion. So this isn't a discussion of now and what might happen in the future. There's no reason to talk about binding the council or what's so. I hope each of you will encourage, tell the people they talk to exactly, you've got a lot of design work that's gone in and can be used on a smaller scales than what was hopes and it's gonna be good to the community and I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak this evening? Josh, can you help me see on the screen? Is there anybody that has their hand raised online that would like to speak?
I don't see anyone with their hands raised.
Okay, we're in the chat room saying that, trying to raise their hand, it don't help. Okay. I will seek a motion for adjournment, please. Who vice enough, thank you. My daughter, all's in favor, so if I'm saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi. Those both. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending in person.
Good night.